Hi Bruce.
Hello.
See Jack is logging in. We'll give him a minute or so and make sure he gets up and running.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, hi Jack.
Okay, just can't see me.
Just can't see you.
Well, that's not so bad.
I'm glad you could join.
There we go.
Hey, there, there he is. Well, I've got half past the hour, so we'll go ahead and get started. Board will be starting with the Board of Zoning Appeals. Staff, will you call the roll?
Martin.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Buchanan.
Here.
Jones. French.
Here.
And Gerson.
Here.
Well, note that Ken is here today, even though I didn't hear an affirmative.
Yep.
I'm here.
There he is.
There he is, yep. We can see him. Welcome, Board. Appreciate you attending this evening. We've got a full, full team tonight. That's, that's the first for maybe a month or so. We've had one or two off air, but it's good to have, good to see everybody's face. Even though this is a Zoom meeting, we look forward to the next time that we can all meet, meet face to face. So we'll, we'll just get started here. We've got, in all of your packets, you should have had a chance to review the minutes from our March 18 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes and recommend approval as submitted.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all opposed and for all opposed, excuse me, all, all to approve. It's been, excuse me, can't talk. Been talking all day today, so excuse me. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All, all affirmatives, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. To protect the rights of all parties involved and in order to establish an orderly fact finding procedure, the Reno County Board of Zoning Appeals follows a specific fact finding procedure which is contained in some handouts that if you had those, if you were meeting in the, in the public works, you'd have, have a chance to see those. Your attention, your attention to this procedure is appreciated. All decisions by this BZA are final. Decisions may be appealed to the District Court within 30 days of the decision. We would like to formally open the hearing regarding case number 2021-04. A request by Mason and Kayla Engel for a special exception from the Reno County zoning regulations to construct a 40 by 75 by 16 residential accessory building. The total square footage of the accessory building exceeds the 2,000 square foot maximum permitted on land zone R1 Rural Residential District. The property is located approximately 800 feet north of the intersection of Hidden Meadow Lane and East 9th Avenue at 1019 Hidden Meadow Lane. Do any of the board members have conflict of interest in this case?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, seeing none, with the applicant, go ahead and, and state your name and address for the record, and you have 10 minutes to present your case.
We're Mason and Kayla Engel, and we currently live in Hutch at 806 East 43rd, but we will be living at 1019 Hidden Meadow Lane. And we would like to build a building next to our house approximately 40 feet to the north. And we would just like it for some storage of toys and other things and just we, I, I do a lot of projects around the house and stuff, and we'd just like to have a good spot to be able to lay it all out in and have some extra storage. Our house, we, we just built the house at 1019 Hidden Meadow Lane and we're finishing it up right now, but we didn't build a lot of storage into it with the hopes that we could end up building a building afterwards and that's, that's been our plan the whole time. So we've talked to Health Department, I had, when we first set out the well and the septic and everything, we kind of planned everything to where we could both, and they would be okay with it, and they've been on site multiple times, and we actually just got our septic done this week and they were on site and haven't, haven't expressed any problems and we, that's what we'd like to do. So, yeah, and the, the reason for the height would be for we, our Kayla's grandpa and grandma will go camping and her parents used to camp, so we would eventually probably like to buy a camper and maybe go to the lake some, and so if we have a 16 foot tall building, then we can have a 14 foot tall door, which anything road legal can fit in. So that's the reason for the height and the reason for the size is if we put a camper in there, it doesn't leave much room for anything else. So we decided to make it a little bigger, so.
Okay, are there any questions for the applicant?
Utilities involved, I assume you're going to electrify, have electric current and power into the shop. Any wastewater concerns? Are you going to have a water plumbed in or close by?
We're going to have a ground. Sorry, we'll, we'll have a Berry hydrant on the outside next to it, and I will have electricity in there. I'm going to take 100 amp service from our 200 amp main service. We have a panel mounted to the north of the house towards where this is going to be over closer to the propane tank. We will also have propane plumbed into it so that I can have a heater in there.
Everything's underground except the propane tank. I assume the service is all, service is all underground.
Yes, sir.
Looked like there was no concerns about septic wastewater treatment or lateral fields or any kind of thing, but looked like you're out of the way, so got that all out of the way, taken care of. Yeah, that's always a concern for us down the road, you know, you never know what's going to happen 30 years from now, so.
Does the board have any other questions for the applicant?
No. Okay, staff. I do, I do have a question. What's going to be the exterior finish on the new building?
It will be, I don't remember the gray, but Kayla picked the gray. It'll be gray that'll match the color of our house and the roof will be a dark gray that will match also the metal roof on our house. So it kind of, hopefully they will complement each other and look, look presentable together. That, that was part of the negotiations.
So. Okay, thank you. You've answered my question very well. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, staff.
Mark Conach and County Planner, getting the board. Hidden Meadows subdivision, if you don't know where that is located, it's about the 4th and Beulah Haven Road area, so you're located, you know, east of the city of Hutchinson in that part of the county here. The request is for a 40 by 75 foot building, which equates to about 3,000 square foot building to be placed on this property. The owner recently received a zoning permit from me to construct a new house on here, and now he would like to be able to build this size shed, which does not meet our current regulations without the special exception. So that is why we are here today. If you look at the site plan, a little bit difficult to maybe read if you're not used to seeing people drawing our Beacon website that we use, but it does have a drawing feature. The, the house is the one box located kind of in the middle of where he's, he's put his picture, and then the shed is going to be located kind of north, northwest, you know, of the house. As Mr. Engel stated, you know, he's been working with the Health Department on the installation of the wastewater system and the well with the idea that this building was going to be placed on the property. So they cited, you know, the septic well far enough away from this building, so it should not be a concern for those two systems out there. The building, in reviewing their site plan, complies with all of our setback requirements for that, that parcel of land. Talk a little bit about Hidden Meadows subdivision here. The average lot size, especially in this area of the subdivision, is about four, four and a half acres per lot. His building is going to be about 200 foot off of the road. His lot, if you look at the zoning map that I had, is located at the end of the cul-de-sac right there. The cul-de-sac kind of dumps into a couple of big farm fields. There's no structures nearby on that. The nearest house is about 800, 850 feet to the southeast. And again, we've done no special exceptions for this subdivision. All, people have built sheds on their property and they were either done prior to our existing regulations or they were under the 2,000 square, square foot maximum that we, we allow. So with that, I've reviewed the case and staff recommends approval of this request based on the three conditions that you see listed in my staff report. I won't read those unless the board would like to have clarification. This proposed residential accessory structure really should not have a concern on that surrounding neighborhood. You know, it's not located in front of a neighbor's house or anything like that that might cause any type of, of concern. As you see in the comment section of your report, one person did submit a response that is in favor of, of this proposal, and even the cows like, like this too, so. So that's always good to hear everything. So with that, Board, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
The board have any questions for staff?
No.
I think Mark's done a good job covering the things that we usually look at.
Mark, has anyone come to the Public Works Building to comment?
There is nobody here, Mr. Chairman, to, to comment on this case.
Okay. The applicant, do, do you have anything else to add?
We did talk to a lot of our neighbors that are in the close vicinity, and the, the only complaint was, one of them said that if I built that bigger shop, I'd have to have him, help him add 20 feet to his shop. Your shop too. So that, that's the only, and we, also, I forgot to mention, we've, we're building the shop on the north end of the house. The subdivision is located to the south of us, and we're putting it parallel to the house, set back to our garage, so it's actually off the front of the house. It's about 30 feet back. So it'll kind of be hidden by the house from everywhere else as part of the curb appeal so that it doesn't mess up the neighborhood and look daunting having a big shop up there. Yeah, so.
Does the board have any further questions for the applicant or for staff? If not.
I have no further comments, so.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mark. If not, the public hearing is now closed. Board, is there any discussion? I'll take silence as golden. So all, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that case 2021-04 be approved as submitted.
I second that.
It's been, been moved and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion? Staff, call the roll. Martin.
Yes.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Gerson.
Yes.
Build that building.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for going through the process. Appreciate it. Staff, do you have anything else to bring before this board?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman, for the BZA.
Okay. Board, do you have anything else to be discussed? Seeing none, I'll tell you, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the BZA.
I move with adjourn.
Okay.
And been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. April 15, 2021, BZA meeting is adjourned. Right. Change packets here. Give me a second. Okay, we'll call the Reno County Planning Commission, April 15, 2021, meeting to order. Staff, please call the roll.
Martin.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Buchanan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
French.
Here.
Gerson.
Alrighty. Board, in your packet, you have minutes from our March 18 meeting. Hope you've had a chance to review those. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have reviewed the minutes as submitted and recommend approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All approving, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Minutes from March 18, Planning Commission have been approved. To protect the rights of all parties involved and to give an opportunity for everyone to speak, the Reno County Planning Commission follows a specific procedure. During the hearing, there'll be an opportunity for, for comments from the applicant, the planning and zoning staff, and members of the audience. Members of the Planning Commission may ask questions or request additional information at any time. If the Planning Commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the County Commissioners within approximately two weeks. Mark will notify the applicant of the date. Anyone else who is interested can contact Mark or the County Commission for the exact date. Regardless of whether or not the Planning Commission approves or disapproves the proposed condition, conditional use permit, it is possible to file a protest regarding the decision. Please contact Mark for the process that must be used to file this protest. I'll now formally open case 2021-05. A request by Jared and Anna Woods for a conditional use permit to establish a personal training and fitness studio on land zone R1 Rural Residential District. The property is located on the east side of North Kent Road, approximately 1,000 feet north of the intersection of North Kent Road and East 43rd Avenue at 4516 North Kent Road. Do any planning commission, do any planning commission members have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
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 Would the applicant, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Any, any outside contacts either? Thank you.
No.
No.
The applicant, please state your name and address for the record, and you have 10 minutes to, to present your case.
Um, well, I am Anna Woods. I'm the one who runs the shoe strength business out of our barn here. Address is 4516 North Kent Road, Beulah, 67522. Um. Basically, I just want to run a fitness and training business out of the quarter part of our barn. Three days a week, roughly 10 to 15 people attending over the course of the day. They have really long driveways. People just park in front of the barn and come in and out. It's all enclosed. That's basically what I'm requesting. Because I've covered a lot of it's, it's online now that I do wifi through the gym, so I don't have as much traffic. So. That's basically it.
Board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, a curiosity question. Have the wall already been built inside of what you call the barn?
Yeah.
And do you have any plans for heating, cooling, or restroom facilities in there?
Um, we have a moving wall that we move out in the summer and then we close it in, in the winter. So then I have a stove in there that we run heat through. Then the summer, we have cooling fans that we open the garage doors. There's two big garage doors on each side, so we run a cooling fan to circulate air through. Um, and then we have a porta potty on, that will be brought out to bring on premises, because the only bathroom we have at the current moment is on the backside of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any plans for, what are your plans for down the road as far as this facility? Are you looking at some potential expansion?
No. If I do expansion, it'll be all online. It won't be through this facility, so.
Would I be correct in assuming you've done some things online already?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
So this, this, use this facility as kind of a, an expansion of what you've already been doing.
Correct.
Mr. Macklin raised the issue about facilities there and, and restroom, and said wastewater is always a concern that we have. You have no plans to put in showers or, or indoor, indoor plumbing or any, any, any such thing that will complicate the future?
No.
Any other questions from the commission?
Now, you are a sole, sole employee, sole proprietor, and you have no employees, is that correct? No plans to expand for additional staff or anything?
I just, well, I had an intern for the last three months that's been working with me, and I actually just hired her last week. So I have one employee who will work one evening a week for me.
Correct. Any other questions from this, from the board?
I have a couple, okay, I'd say I have a couple for the owner, Mr. Chair. This was, could you discuss like the, the current operations out there right now, what you're doing versus with your proposal? It sounds like, you know, you're wanting to expand the number of people that could come out onto the property right now versus what you're doing right now. Is that like a fair assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just opening, I've been, up until now, it's been just one-on-one or small group, so only one person at a time, and I'd like to open it up to small group classes, so three to five people in, in the gym space per one hour. So there would just be more traffic, basically, coming up and down the road.
Perfect, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to hear. That's what I assumed. Second question, last question regarding lighting. Do you have any additional lighting other than your, your common residential lighting, either on the building or proposed, like, you know, on the parking lot? You know, you.
Yeah, we have motion lights out, outside of the barn and then the flip, um, whatever the lights are called on the power line poles. There's one right out toward the driveway.
But nothing, nothing unusual, you know, other than typical residential parking that you're thinking about, you know, light poles, I mean, that's typical, I don't know, something like, stuff that you would see that would flood the area of like, like a parking lot, for example, you know, something along that lines.
Oh, yeah. No, nothing than what's normal on the house or the barn already.
Got you. Perfect. Right. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Staff, do you have any other, you ready for your report?
I'm ready for my report if the board doesn't have any further questions, so. So, right, so currently this business is operating as a home occupation, and home occupations do have strict rules on the capacity that people can serve. Usually it's going to be five, five people or, or less. It's got other rules and regulations with that. Home occupations are permitted by right in our regulations. We don't really require, you know, a review, but as you've heard tonight, you know, we're looking at going beyond our, our home occupation rules, and so that is why we have to do this conditional use permit to review other aspects of the business to make sure that it's going to be compatible with the area and stuff. So that is why we are here tonight doing that. In my report, you know, I think I talked about, you know, providing the owner a letter here stating that they are a home occupation based off of what they had described to me. In that letter, you know, I mentioned that if they would like to expand, that they would have to go through that conditional use permit process. And so right now, as you, as you somewhat heard, as I included in my, my report, the training is supposed to occur about three times a week out there, between five and 18 people per day over a 13 hour period. That alone exceeds our home occupation regulations, and so that's really why we are here tonight. Also, you heard tonight that this training gym is going to be in a portion of an existing building. The total building is 42 by 60. The gymnasium section is a 26 by 30 foot area of that shed, and in your site plans, you do see how that shed is broken out there. The applicant also said that no more than eight people will be receiving the, the training at any one time out there. Talk about parking, parking paving requirements, that type of stuff. That's always, you know, a concern or something that needs to be reviewed here. Our regulations don't really have a specific land use dedicated to personal training and fitness, and so, you know, I review that and I've determined that one space per two or three square feet is going to be required, and I did that calculation just based off of the gymnasium square footage only, not the total square footage of the entire building, since they're not using the total building out there. And so with that calculation, she's required to provide four spaces for clients and/or employees. The number of stalls, you know, I believe is not really adequate, seeing that in her, her right, she said that she could be serving up to, you know, eight people plus, as you heard, she also has interns, so you could say that, you know, nine people could be parking in that area potentially at any one time. In reviewing their, their site plan, their site plan does show an area dedicated to what I call customer parking or, or staff parking. In doing that calculation, it shows that that area could provide parking for up to 22 cars, 22 stalls, if you will. Our regulations do not require this area or the driving surface to be paved, since Kent Road is a dirt road. We don't require that paving. If they would choose to pave or do some type of milling, so that's strictly on, on them. It's not a zoning requirement here. Staff would recommend that they, you know, install those 22 parking areas, just because you, you could have a situation where you could have a full class, say of eight people coming, you know, for one class, and then maybe in the next, you know, 30 minutes, another class would start, where you have, say, another, you know, five people coming in, so you could potentially have more than just eight cars coming. So you could potentially have more than just eight cars coming and going on that property. Not sure if that's the way the business plan works here, but just kind of looking at the information that was provided, I kind of anticipated that something like that could occur. So, you know, I think that area dedicated on the site plan really should be, uh, constructed and provided for those customers to be able to park in that area here. No sign was shown on the site plan, didn't appear no sign is proposed out there. We do not have landscaping requirements in our regulations unless you would choose to do something like that through the conditional use permit process. However, you know, if you looked at an aerial photo of, of this area, it's surrounded really by trees. And so staff do not feel any need to add any additional landscaping for any, any reason whatsoever. You heard a little bit of talk about the type of lighting that is out there right now. There's nothing more, more intense or anything than what we, you would typically find on a rural property. And so there's no need to add any additional lighting, you know, out there. Talking about, uh, factors that we need to consider when we review all conditional use permits. I would probably mention to the board, uh, for the record, number two, which is whether the proposed use is compatible. And in reviewing the intensity of, of this land use here, um, and the location of where the shed is on their property, staff believes that, based off of those two reasons, that this, uh, type of land use could be considered compatible with the surrounding area. Next one I would mention would be, uh, number six, where the applicant's property is suitable for the proposed use. Staff believes that the property is suitable for the use. Uh, there's enough area to provide adequate parking for all customers. Uh, and even expansion, even though you heard testimony here that they're not really expanding anymore than what they're doing here, but that potential is there. There's adequate screening in place, uh, to help with kind of like any dust control or, or noise that may be coming from cars driving down the driveway or, you know, or music playing during any type of, of workout, you know, that they're doing. And so, uh, staff believes that the, the property is suitable for this type of land use at that intensity that they're proposing. Talk a little bit about the comp plan here, you know, it was pretty long, uh, long discussion that I had in here. Um, I think you've been reviewing that, you could see that there are several aspects of the comp plan that says that, you know, this proposal is, you know, in favor of the comprehensive plan and, and compliant with that. And then there are other, uh, aspects of that that says that, you know, this could be against our comprehensive plan here. But taken all told, again, you know, looking at the intensity and really the minimal effects that we believe, you know, this land use would have on the area, uh, I came down on the side of this being in compliance with our, with our comprehensive plan. So with that discussion, uh, staff has recommended approval of the request based on the seven factors that you see listed in my report. Uh, I did attach six conditions of approval, uh, that you see listed in that report. And so, um, talk a little bit about, uh, the next section below that here. Uh, comments from, uh, the, uh, public here that we sent notices to. I did receive an email from, from one gentleman, and that's included in your, um, comment section here. I'd like to put on record, you know, that I did comment back to that individual here and tried to set up a time to discuss with him any concerns. And I did not hear any response back from that, and so I don't know what his, uh, specific concerns would have been with this property. I, I can only suspect and guess that it might have to do with not understanding, uh, our type of zoning in the county and the requirement for a conditional use permit for all, all types of non-residential land uses. But again, that's just speculation. Received two phone calls from, from other citizens requesting the, uh, information contained in, in the application. And so I did, uh, send that information to those two people. Uh, they did not respond back to me with any official comments. And again, uh, comments that I, that I have, uh, from a phone conversation or in-person are really not a part of any official record. So, um, so I left it at that. Uh, they did not respond back to me or anything like that. So, uh, just kind of wanted to go over that a little bit with the board. Uh, we don't get too many comments, you know, anymore from, from the citizens, but I just thought I would put that on the record and explain that, uh, a bit more in detail to the board. So with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Have any particular questions? I just, you know, I noted that you had one, one person who had, had a little question, had contacted you. So I'm glad to hear that there was no further comment from anyone. Sounds like mostly people were just wanting more information about what was happening and, and then just probably be a big concern from anyone. That's good.
Yeah, I think so. I think they were just curious, you know, when I notice this as a personal training and fitness facility, you know, I think that could generate that there may be worried that Planet Fitness is going next door to, to them. Um, so I sent the application, and I think, uh, you know, the, the Woods did a very good job in, in their write-up, kind of explaining the maximum number of people that are gonna be there. Didn't tell what days of the week, but they said three days a week. And so I think, you know, based on that information, they felt no further need to comment. Again, speculation, but that's kind of what I take from that.
And, and that's a good sign, because that means the neighbors were interested in what was going on, and they were paying attention. And, and the fact that we heard nothing else from them indicates that they're, they didn't have any big concern.
Right, right.
What's the radius that those letters are set out? Just curious.
One thousand feet. One thousand feet from the property line is, is the radius.
Okay. Cause there's not a lot of neighbors close, so I was curious.
Not a lot of neighbors with, maybe particularly houses, but it's actually property, so it's not like, it's not people that have a house or anything. It's people that own property within one thousand feet of your, of your property, so yes.
Maybe they were excited about a Planet Fitness, and they wanted to invest in a quick shop next door or something. I don't know.
They're probably wondering what the heck I'm doing out here.
Yeah.
A workout place in a barn is rather interesting to most people.
When, when my wife and I made the trip out there to, to drive through, in fact, you may have seen us drive her in, cause I drove her in the driveway and turned around in your turnaround. You may have seen me do that. My wife said, "Where are we going?" "Oh, we're gonna go out and see where I'm gonna send you for fitness."
There you go.
She said, "No, you're not gonna send me out there." Her comment to me was, "But this is a long dirt road." I said, "Sandra, um, fifty, sixty years ago, when we were kids, they were all dirt roads."
Yes. Yeah.
Staff, is there anyone there at the Public Works that have come to comment on this case?
There is nobody here at Public Works to comment.
Any other questions from, uh, the board or staff for the applicant?
Do you have any concerns about, uh, uh, the logistics of getting there? Is, uh, there gonna be more road traffic and, and such? Is it, uh, is that adequate or going to require upgrades in any form to, to, uh, make sure that the road is passable?
There really shouldn't be any, any road concerns with that, you know, given the, um, the number of people that are gonna be, you know, present there at any one, one time. Uh, just normal, normal traffic, maybe slight, you know, increase being on, you know, if she does do the maximum eighteen people, you know, on those three days, but really, it's gonna be just a very slight increase in normal traffic out there. So, you know, the, use the example, you know, the Planet Fitness, that might be a different story, you know, something like that. But, uh, with this type of, of, of proposal, no, there should not be road concerns.
We have our driveway treated twice a year also, cause the bus comes down here to pick up the kids. So the rule was, if I want the bus to keep coming, we have to keep the driveway nice and, um, drivable, so.
And I trust the bus comes, go to your front door to pick up the kids.
They do. Pretty handy.
There any other comments that the applicant would like to make?
No.
Any other, uh, questions or comments for the, that the board might have for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, I will say I have some concerns about, uh, servicing this area with a, with a portable potty, uh, situation. Something that the public is going to be involved with. I, I would prefer to see a more, uh, more upscale, uh, facility there. But, uh, I, I think this apparently is within our regulations, so I, I guess there's no reason to, uh, exclude the permit on that basis, uh, and I will be voting in favor of the applicant. But, uh, I, I do have some concerns about, uh, wishing there was a little more permanent type of facilities, uh, involved here if we're going to be serving public, uh, uh, clients, and especially maybe even some with, uh, some mobility issues.
Uh, a question I might have then, that you have posed in my mind, is Mark, if in the future they decided to install some, uh, ins- indoor restroom facilities, maybe even a shower inside that same building, would that change, uh, bring about a deed for another application?
No. If they were just gonna add restrooms or shower facility, no, they, it wouldn't. They would just get with the Health Department just to verify no, uh, permit's gonna be needed for something like that. You know, and at that time, they probably wanted to see some calculations on how much additional water would be placed in their lagoon. Cause, you know, as you saw in the Health Department comments, um, I don't think they were under the understanding that, you know, they were gonna use a porta potty, but, you know, if they wanted to pipe that stuff into their existing tank or, I think it's a lagoon, as, as I recall, uh, you know, they would maybe want to have that reviewed and make sure that they don't, uh, tax that system to cause, cause a failure. But, uh, no, uh, in the short answer, no, it would not cause another conditional use permit review for something like that.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
And we have a septic.
It is septic, okay.
Yeah, and usually I let people have the choice whether they wanna, our bathroom's right inside the back door, so they can choose to go in the house or use outdoors, so.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? If not, we'll close this public hearing on this case. Is there any discussion with planning commission? If not, Chair, we'll entertain, entertain a motion.
For Chair, I would move case number twenty-two-one dash zero-five, request by Jared and Anna Woods requesting conditional use permit for Moreno County zoning regulations to establish a personal training and fitness studio on a parcel of land zone R1. Rural residential district be approved based on the seven factors, six conditions listed in the staff report, and it is heard at this public hearing.
I got that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Who, who seconded it, please?
Arlene.
I did.
Arlene, okay.
It may have been, it may have been more than one of us.
Yeah, I got her too. Thanks.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board? If none, staff, please call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Gertson?
Yes. Motion carries.
I would just note for the board and Ms. Woods too, that, um, county commissioners recently switched their meeting days, so they're only meeting like every other, other week now. And so this unfortunately won't be on until May eleventh at, at nine AM. Uh, there's something called the protest petition that you heard the chairman mention, and so that's a two-week wait right there. Uh, don't anticipate one being submitted, but by statute, we need to wait two weeks. By the time we get on the county commission, it's gonna be May eleventh, and so that'll be at nine AM. And then, at that time, I will, you know, present, uh, the recommendations to the board of county commissioners. And you're welcome to attend and listen, you know, if you want to. But sometime after that, you know, um, the board will decide on, on this case, and I'll be in touch with you guys on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Is there any other business, uh, staff that you have for this board?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Right now, um, as you may have seen in my email, uh, we're planning on, uh, bringing everybody back to the office for May's public hearing, barring any major concerns or setbacks that would develop between now and, and the meeting on, on May twentieth. And so, uh, for May's meeting, I plan on coming back to, to the office here. Right now, we just have one BZA case, uh, nothing in the planning commission. So what I would like to do is maybe, um, if I can get it together, uh, have a, an initial discussion with the board on, uh, the manufactured home foundations that Commissioner Jones brought up last month, a little bit. But also, uh, kind of begin the process of a possible text amendment regarding accessory structure shed. I'm gonna try and get the board something here, some options to look at, and we can discuss that then, since we got a little bit of an open meeting. And, uh, see if the board can give me some more, more direction on maybe what they would want to see. And so, uh, that's kind of my, my hope and goal. I'm not sure how much of a write-up I can get to the board, uh, in time. I'm gonna do my best to try and get you guys something to kind of look at here and, and, and think about. But, um, don't need to have a tremendously lengthy discussion or anything like that. But since it is kind of a little bit of a lighter agenda, I thought, well, if we can, you know, um, keep it to like an hour meeting, give me some direction, then I can kind of take it from there and see what this board wants to do. So that's my, my thoughts for May. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that you'd like to have discussed on the May agenda, but, you know, let me or Russ, Lisa know.
Mark, one thing I was thinking about, if you, if we're gonna talk a little bit about accessory structures, if you could give us, uh, a little bit of a synopsis of kind of the sizes of the structures that we've, we've had requests for over the last couple of years, that might be helpful.
Yeah, that was one of the things that I, I wanted to do, was like the sizes, maybe the parcel size, or even like the number of cases that we've had, you know, I can guesstimate that we probably had, what, over thirty of these so far? And, uh, right now, I haven't heard a major hiccup from the board on hardly any of them, really. So, but yeah, I'll, I'll try and put something together, you know, between now and, and then on, on the sizes and give the board some options.
Have we denied any?
We have not denied any.
I think the one we came closest to would have been one that was in a more residential area, and it was a pretty good-sized shed in a residential area, and that one got a little bit more scrutiny. We, uh, was one of the first ones that we looked at, and we ended up approving it. But, um, that, that to me is the kind of case where you might look closer. It's where you're, we've got a lot of houses close by, and you're putting a big shed.
Yeah, you might recall, Lisa, and I'm not sure who else on the board, maybe, maybe Ken at that time. I think it was like the first case that we did, uh, in Shepherd Acres, where the gentleman wanted to put a forty-by-sixty in. But I think the issue was he wanted to have sixteen-foot sidewalls for a camper. And so the, the building would have towered over, over the house, and up in Shepherd Acres, you're looking at half-acre lots again. But, yeah, I think there was some discussion on that, and actually, I think Dave Yerel was here for that as well, cause it was right after we adopted the regulations. So, yeah, that was the one that just generated a little bit of a, a pause, I guess, if you will, from the board, but ultimately, you know, it was approved.
Would it be conceivable to look at some kind of proportional, uh, regulation where if it covered a certain percentage of the parcel that it had to come to us as opposed to a, just a flat square footage?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly an option, Bruce, yeah, that we could, we could look at a certain lot coverage. Uh, I know the city of Richardson does that, where I think you can't cover more than thirty-five percent of your lot with accessory buildings. I mean, that's certainly an option. I hadn't really thought about that. I was thinking more, you know, initially along, you know, certain, uh, square footage. But, I mean, that's certainly something we can do, if it's the pleasure of the board, is look at a, a percentage. It might be kind of hard to calculate that on some parcels that we have, but we can certainly, you know, entertain that.
The other issue I can see is, uh, possibly the location of the structure on a parcel of land. So if you have a smaller parcel and somebody wants to put it right out by the road or the street, and has a house behind it, that's not gonna be too sightly. So, you know, it's just another issue that try to figure out how to deal with.
Well, I think you're right, Steve. I mean, that's another issue to, to think about, you know, if this board wants to make a Well, I think you're right, Steve. I mean, that's another issue to, to think about, you know, if this board wants to make a change in the regulations to say you can just build this. Uh, you're going to lose that ability to review that. And the, the neighbors are going to lose the ability to comment on something like that because. You know, we have a thirty foot setback from the road right away. And, and so, yeah, you could have situations where a big shed of forty by sixty or greater could be. Out in front of somebody's house. And so that's why I think, you know, we'll try to ask some options, but I think we need to think everything through a little. Little thoroughly here. Cause yeah, we could, you know, lose that ability to review that. And then now we're back in the same boat that kind of put this regulation in place to begin with.
We, we do say though, that the accessory structure needs to be. I mean, the house needs to be closer to the road than the accessory structure, correct?
Incorrect. Nope.
It's not.
That was the old regulation. That was the old regulation where you could not put an accessory building in front of your house. And so you, you know, take some of. Some of you guys that live out in, in the county and you have ten, fifteen acres here. And you want to put an accessory building ten foot in front of your house. Ah, well, you can't do that under the old regulations. And, you know, that's why we got rid of that, that regulation because somebody that has ten or fifteen acres, that's kind of. You know, ridiculous, but somebody that has a half acre, like, you know, even this four and a half acre parcel we just did. Uh, you know, if you lived in middle, I said, we're just gonna put that big building out in front of his house. Uh, some people might have a, a concern with that. So. But no, that was the old regulation, Lisa, that we got rid of. And we were doing variances on those.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah. And it caused, that would cause a lot of heartaches in people.
So is it possible to have a, kind of a double standard on setbacks, one for the, the primary residents and one for any accessory structures?
Yes, um, I guess come again or explain a separate setback requirement, like, you know, we could, is that, you mean like have, make sure.
Basically the, the accessory structure and have to be further back than the house, which might. The, the problem of having a building in front of a house.
Yeah, you could, but you know, like you say, you know, we, you gotta remember every parcel in the county that's less than forty acres is R one. And so. You could ask somebody with twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five acres, it's on R one. If they want to put a building out in front of their house now, you know. What are we doing? We're doing a, a special exception or we're doing a variance. And I don't want to do that necessarily. I. I, I don't know. So it's some of the law to kind of think through a little bit.
Would we ever, would we ever have a situation where there, someone might have a four or five acre, uh, lot, but they might have a pond or something, uh. Uh, on there that would take a half an acre or part of a, part of an acre behind that, which would take up some of the space and. Uh, obviously cut back on the space available that they would have for wastewater treatment or lateral field or, or, or even for a, a, a surface type, uh, treatment. Seems to me we still need to be watchful about the, the total acreage and the, and, and the, uh, size of the building.
Right, right.
I, I don't know if such lots even exist in, in our area, but, uh, somebody could always get a backhoe and dig one.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, some people do. Some people build ponds and that takes up obviously, you know, a lot of their land. And so that. That area obviously is not conducive to a wastewater system. And so. But pretty much nowadays they can get a wastewater system on just about any, any parcel. I mean, you know, we're doing. Quarter acre, half acre lots, you know, down around the lake that are that way. And, and we put septic systems on there. It's not, it's not easy. From what I understand, but it, it can be done.
I was just thinking of the amount of surface that's taken up by the, by a pond, reducing the acreage available to set your shed on, to set your three thousand square foot shed on.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is kind of my thoughts since it's maybe a little bit lighter of a gentle, you can. You know, think about that for the next month, off and on or so, and be prepared to kind of maybe give me some direction on, on what we want to do with that.
Final thought that I might have on that is I'd be curious about what established the two thousand foot. You know, it seems like the, the buildings we've been approving have all been forty by seventy-five by sixteen foot walls. And, uh. If I, you know, I'm not objecting to any of that. I'm just saying, uh, what, uh, where did the two thousand feet come from?
Lisa could tell you.
I think we just went, I don't know, maybe two thousand square feet. I don't think there was any good analysis of what was right come out.
And I'm not suggesting that we increased that from two thousand to three thousand. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just, uh, education. Feel like a little bit more education of all of the, um, members of the group.
Yeah. And, and, uh, you know, if you're listening to the radio, you keep hearing ads for. Construction companies are saying we can do a forty by sixty building. Well, uh, yeah, automatically that's over our limits. So. If that's a common building size, I mean, I, we didn't even talk about where we're common building sizes right now. So.
Actually, that kind of goes back to, you know, I think what Harley was talking about, getting some information on. What size buildings we've been permitting for the last year or two. And, and I'd also like to see what size of, of. Parcel of land those were being placed on just out of curiosity for comparison. But I know, I agree, it's, we've been seeing a lot of forty by sixty type buildings.
Right, right. Yeah, we'll, we'll eventually get you that information, you know, w- with that. Um, but like Lisa said at Harley, I mean, you know, it was nothing more than really a, a random number. I mean, I, I can distinctly remember that. I, I tell you that. You know, this board, even before Lisa tenure, you know, we're, we're dealing with updating our regulations. And so this board dealt with. Regulations for over seven years trying to come up with something and. Finally found a concept that made sense, was acceptable. And the original proposal, I can tell you Harley was, was twelve hundred. Square feet. And I know all of us at that time sat around a table and thought twelve hundred feet, you know, a thirty by forty, that's, you know, that's pretty. Pretty small, especially when you factor in that a person could have other accessories on their property. And then we'd be doing, uh, special exception for every single, uh. Permit that I wanted to issue. And so sitting around the table, like I said, somebody just threw out the number, well, can't we up that to like, say two thousand feet? And so. Everybody agreed to that. And that's really how it happened. There was no. Scientific study or anything like that done in, in that number. It's just strict like, well, we wanted something more than, more than twelve hundred. And so we just picked a nice round number of two thousand.
Is there any other business that, that we need to discuss?
I've got a question since Dawn's on. On the bridge on Forty-third Street. Looks like it's about eight feet above the road. What, what's going to happen there?
We can't hear you, Dawn.
Can't hear you, Dawn. Nope. Nope.
Don't read lips either.
Can you sign language to show us what's going to happen?
Sign board.
Your staff might appreciate this, Dawn.
Make a move. Next time I ask, but easy question, Jack.
Yeah.
Oh goodness.
It's not muted. So I, I don't know what the deal is. That's, that's, that's the way it goes with me. Uh, yeah, that's elevated there. And they'll be coming down on the OK sixty-one. And it'll be a complete different intersection. And then coming from the south on OK sixty-one, it'll curve around to forty-third.
Okay.
Because south of forty-third is closed. You know, that's not a road anymore on OK sixty-one. It's a bike hike trail actually. And then there's one driveway down for a person's house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's coming along. Well, they poured a concrete deck on it today. So now it looks like a bridge.
I thought it looked like there was concrete on it, you know?
Yeah, they got poured today, all of it. What's the completion date? Uh, supposed to be February of twenty twenty-two, but it, it'll be, I think, the end of this year. It's coming along pretty good.
Awesome.
I'll be glad when it's done.
I believe it.
Yeah.
So is that house on the corner going to go away?
No.
Okay.
No. Nope, everybody gets to live in their house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Any other, any other business before the staff or this board?
I'll take it as silence is golden. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
See you all in person next month.
We hope, yes. Yep, yep. Look, look, look forward to seeing everybody face to face. This is, uh, this is, uh, this is an okay replacement, but I, I call it a replacement. It's not the, it's not the real thing. See you all. What's that?
It's a fake meeting.
I don't know. I've just spent all week in a virtual meeting like this, uh, trying to deliver some service training. So, uh, it's the world we live in.